Okay, I'm going to call the committee on order. The first item is the law department's budget reallocation. Mr. Balteko, or in this case, Ms. Moore.
It's my understanding, I don't know if everyone received the memo that Carl sent out yesterday, he'd like to create another position in the law department based on money that we're getting from CDBG and extra funds that we have, basically to handle the extra duties, you know, the stuff that kind of is spilling over in our office.
So it's my understanding that the CDBG funds that will put into the law department, this is the first year they'll put in, I believe?
Yes.
Forty thousand dollars from the CDBG. And then the other is coming from fees for service, which he used to pay our part-time real estate person. So my first question was how, is it going to be sustainable? Ms. DiGiozza, do you want to speak to this at all?
This is not exactly what you were trying to say.
Yep, I didn't know if you had any more add or any discussion. No questions? Ms. Portfield?
So how is it to be sustainable?
Well, they're anticipating you put that chunk of money in from CDBG annually, and then the line exists for that fees for service. I mean, the money is going to always be there, right, unless it moves somewhere else, but that part-time position isn't going to be resold, correct? Which was not a line, it wasn't a position, it was a contract, so it just came out as fees for service.
Chair, also, we refused proposals for CDBG money. The department has at different times taken CDBG money to pay outside contractors or pay other staff internally. We're doing the foreclosures internally, doing the code enforcement internally. When you look about sustainability, hopefully those things won't go on indefinitely. There's light at the end of the tunnel with foreclosures. You know, we're still probably 18 months down the road, maybe 24 months. But also with code enforcement, we're still not at the level where we want to go, but eventually, if we keep doing what we're doing, you see results in that there should be less need in the law department. So I'm not worried about this, you know, going out in perpetuity, but what I'll say in the 24-month period, there's a clear need, we're doing it more efficiently internally than if we hired outside contractors and would ask the council for your support in this budget amendment.
Since we're using the line item that was used for contractual purposes, are those duties still going to be done in the law department by someone, by this person, this position?
I'm not sure if it would be specifically this person, but with the allocation of the existing staff, and looking to hire this other individual too, probably. You know, the reality is, if we start today, it'll be September 1st, by trying to get through civil service, do interviews, be able to do recruitment and hiring.
So it's not necessarily an attorney law position?
Well, yes, we're looking to hire-
You're looking for another attorney?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
I'll move.
Okay. And we, the next three items, Ms. Moore, are executive session items. That's correct. Okay. Is there anything of these three items that should be discussed publicly before the continuing session, the executive session? Okay. Then I will ask for a motion to recess.
I'll move that.
Okay, now, second, I'll move to favor.
Aye.
And we are recessed.
Thank you. We call the order of the Committee on Public Safety, and we have one item before us with the Edward Vermaat Memorial Justice Grant and Assistant Chief Mike Severs here.
As Congressman Bowler said, this is JAG award we give yearly, provided by the Department of Justice. It's based upon crime status and other factors they put in. We don't have a say in how much they award us. We don't have a say in what we spend it on. Recently, one requirement of the grant is obviously the city council approval. Excuse me, the other requirement is to have a meeting between us and the DA's office, which we held last week. We kind of came up with one item that we wanted to try and revive through this funding and then separate items that the DA's office spent ex on, basically split the baby. And the other part we've applied towards, this year, last year we dedicated towards traffic enforcement, meaning better signage, the motor of sign doors. This year, what we're going to do is revamp our crime scene processing room, which is a room that we use for, well, fingerprints on items that we bring to the station, some type of enhancements and so forth, to revamp that room that has not been revamped in 20, 30 years. So we're kind of updating our, it's called a cremation room, it's not a super room, it's kind of process. It would be good to do it because I don't know that much about it. But it's, that's kind of what we like to see as a public safety department, kind of go towards. Move this as a suggestion.
Very good. Any other questions or concerns? The motion to move this?
Second.
And Ms. Brazo, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more questions.
Very good. Anything else that you come before the Committee on Public Safety?
Ms. Brazo, second by Mr. Magravarnov, favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you. And we'll call the order of the Committee on City Development and Planning. We have a few items here. The first is a ceremonial resolution recognizing the Associated Press awardees, and that's by Mr. Palamene, and we do have that in front of us here. A few of our folks from the Gazette have won some awards, and we certainly would like to recognize them, get some resolution at our next meeting. All right, Ms. Portfield, second by Ms. Magravarnov, favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and the Oak Street Bridge, Ms. Brazo.
Yes, so, we were at the Bellevue Neighborhood Meeting last week, I believe, the week before. They all meshing with one another. But anyway, Mr. Wallen, our city engineer, was there to talk about the Oak Street Bridge, and his explanation, as I understand it, is that the city has done everything that we can do, we're in the final design phase, we have the funding in place, we've sent all of the information to Amtrak, and Amtrak's responses, yeah, we'll get back to you, what we, kind of, you know, the letter he read was very neutral, as far as, you know, any, there was no mention of when they might get back, or clearly there was no sense of urgency on the part of Amtrak. So through discussion, and some very passionate discussion, for concern of emergency response times and stuff, we've been kicking this around for years, the citizens of Bellevue asked if we could reach out to our state and federal legislators once again to ask their support, ask their encouragement for Amtrak to move forward, maybe something at the federal level could encourage Amtrak, which is a government agency, to take notice of this bridge. My understanding is there's thousands of bridges like this across the United States, so Oak Street Bridge really doesn't need much of anything to Amtrak, per se. And so I was just coming to the council for a resolution to in turn send to our state and federal representatives, and then also to ask the mayor if he's had any interaction with anyone, you know, on the federal level of late, or if you have any, you know, color to add to this particular discussion.
First of all, Chris Wallen's really done an impressive job-
Absolutely.
-putting together the funding for this bridge, really shouldn't have gone on the list, didn't anticipate closing it, had to close it, lined up the money, just moved through the normal process, and now it's somewhat frustrating dealing with Amtrak, where I believe it's down to some final scheduling issues, but as you articulated, they're not really attaching any level of significance or priority to it. And I'm hoping that that will change through the normal process, just city engineer and our contractors going back and forth, but I don't think at this point it hurts for the council to move forward with this, and again, a little attention to it may pride some people to move this up in the pecking order and get it on the schedule so in fact we can start the rehabilitation work on that bridge.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that, because Mr. Wallen has done a tremendous amount of work on this, and getting the funds that he did get probably wouldn't happen if it was this year versus the year that he did manage to get the funding, so all that is good. Really, the main concern here is Amtrak and their kind of antlers to this circumstance. So, really, just as simple as that, just a tool that we can use to reach out at a higher level, to ask for, you know, some assistance. We can take down Anne's Pizzeria, we can fix the Oak Street Bridge, you know, so.
So prepare something for us?
Yeah, we'll have-
Okay. Very good.
I think we need to-
Any other discussion on this? Ms. Reagan, any comments?
No, I think we should have done this a long time ago. As a matter of fact, I went to a town hall meeting with Paul Tonkles and asked him to get involved, and he was willing to do it, so I think we'll get cooperation from our elected officials, especially on the federal level, I think it's important. They have to put some pressure on that. It's been 38 months now, that bridge has been closed, and there's people that need emergency service that live in the Hungry Hill area, in that area of Bellevue, that needs service, and it's a big, that's a big time difference for people to get there, especially in bad weather, more than anything, because Broadway Hill, a few times it wasn't salted immediately, and sometimes it can't be, and the vehicles can't get up, so we'd have to call for mutual aid from Rotterdam probably if that happened. So it's important, and I know there's thousands and thousands of bridges, but this is important, Schenectady, this bridge, it's a really important bridge, and I know it affects Ferrari's restaurant, too, I'm sure, right? A lot of hungry people that are coming over.
All right, motion to move this, Ms. Magravarnov.
I'll move second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else to come before our committee? We have a few items that will be going in executive session on. Is there anything else to discuss before we make, to go recess? Yes, motion, Ms. Portfield, second by Ms. Magravarnov, on favor, go recess. Say aye, thank you, and we are recessed.
Okay. Call to order, health recreation, our first item on the agenda, the Boys and Girls Club operating city pool. Mr. Howard.
So we are bringing this to the council today for informational purposes, to enter into agreement with the Boys and Girls Club's Schenectady for operation of Central Park Pool, Hillhurst, Front Street, and Quack Village Pool for the year 2016.
Yes, Mr. Coach.
Yes, I talked with Mr. Howard earlier today as well, I just caught it today when I was reviewing. In terms of conditions, page two, it's actually page two, section three there, with under fees. I'd like to have that removed from that, from the contract, because that was there for the Front Street Pool when they were charging fees. We are no longer charging any fees at the Front Street facility, so all our pools essentially are free, and that was the only reason that was in there, after talking with Jeremy Howard. So I'd like to have that section B removed. If that's a good place.
So none of it, there's no fees?
There's, Boys and Girls Club does not charge any other fees at any other pool, just taking over the Front Street Pool, which is, we did take care of that previous years. Previous years, they did charge a fee, but they moved to a better pool, so that's, I have to, I'm okay with that, but that's something I had to discuss with my boss as well.
Mr. Palja?
If I could just include that, we include that in our CDBG application through the Schenectady County Youth Bureau. There is funding that's set aside for lifeguards as well, and then included that there will be no fees charged at the Front Street Pool. So that was in the application.
Could you clarify that? Application from?
For the CDBG, for the Schenectady County Youth Bureau, because we receive funding for the Hillhurst diamonds and the Front Street Pool, so-
You're just passing it through to them, and you said it was taken out? You said there will be no fees charged in the application?
Yes, in the application, it clearly states there are no fees will be charged to any of the folks who are using the Front Street Pool.
And Mr. Howard, you said you needed to check with?
I just want to make sure we're followed, and my boss just to make sure that we're in good shape with that. I have more problems with things, that's why I spoke about discretion, that's why I did it before.
Okay, so, if we're, if everyone's comfortable, we could make sure that we're clear with that, but we could move it pending the outcome of that conversation. Does that work?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct. Or is this one? We must have got it wrong on the way.
Can you ask?
What's the question? Right to-
Second paragraph, the dates, the facility beginning, the date of June.
2016.
Should be 2016.
Okay.
You have the proofreading.
It's down here in 2016, but up there they missed it. Okay, we'll correct those. Yes, Ms. Brazo?
I just want to say that, you know, certainly grateful to the YWCA for all the work that they've done in the past years for the Front Street Pool, but I'm equally as excited to know that our youth can go to any pool in the city, or anywhere in the four pools, to have the same consistent, you know, experience with the Boys and Girls Club taking it over. So either way, we're in good shape, but this is a nice, this is a nice outcome for our neighborhoods.
Okay. All right, instant motion.
So, folks, I-
For committee, we are ultimate.
Health and Recreation.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, sending those to the committees, okay? Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to have a report from the Recreation Advisory Committee. Mr. Bittern is here, joined by a couple of members of the committee also here. Thank you. And while we're passing those around, I just want to say that I've attended a few of the meetings, and the committee has worked extremely hard on making sure the allocation of the funds were equitable this year, and I think that they've done a really good job, and they had a lot of input from the community as well, so.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And you're welcome. There's a couple setbacks, we asked for other things, but they went right back to it, and got it taken care of.
Our group works very diligently, and I just want to acknowledge a couple that are here tonight, Janet Chen, Speryl Zulus, and just thank them for their, all the work that they've done along with the rest of the members of our Recreation Advisory Commission. So what we have before you here tonight is our recommendations for this year's $250,000 allocations. What we did, what we strive to do this year is work very closely with all the neighborhoods to get their input on all, and to get their recommendations, what they thought should go into these parks. I won't go through every piece of teeter totter and slide that's going at every park, but I will talk a little bit on each one. Carey Street Park, we're requesting to allocate $27,680 into that. We are going to be keeping a few things in Carey Street, but we worked very closely with the Habitat Group, who's doing a lot of work down in that area, so we've got their input on that. Land and Terrace Park, worked very closely, again, with their neighborhood group, we're not putting as much into there, but we are replacing what is in there, we're not keeping anything in there, and that's $22,741. South Avenue Park, we're going to be replacing swings and monkey bars, and just to note, we're making sure that everything in these parks are coming to compliance, but if anything that's not in compliance, we're taking out of there, so we're making sure that's all happening. So South Avenue, just over $32,000 in there. Vale Park, big chunk of this money, we talked about last year a little bit, it's just over $40,000, but we're going to be taking the, some of the equipment, all of the equipment, and moving it forward. That has been a safety issue that we expressed in the past, that bringing that equipment closer to not terrace will reduce, you know, things that could be going on in there, so we're hoping that that'll help with the safety aspect of Vale Park. And we're going to be adding some equipment in there along with moving some of the existence, existing up there. Wallenford and Tenth and Webster are two that we're really investing in this year. They're getting the most out of anybody, but it really needs it up there, and we're replacing just about everything in those parks. So that comes about $25,809.97 short of $250,000, so we would like to invest into some benches and some fences in the parks, and we still, we don't have exactly what we want to do with that 25 yet, we're still getting, we're still going to have to get some numbers, but we would like to do that. But that's pretty much in a nutshell, and we're off for questions from them anyway.
And I just also want to just point out that this year, some of the money was, we were able to allocate some to capital improvement, something that we weren't able to do last year, so that's why you see some of the money being set aside for benches and fencing. It's not all playground equipment this year, so something that was really actually needed.
And just one more side note, is that if these recommendations are approved, other than Central Park, we would invest into every single park that has playground equipment in these two years that we've done, and then we hope to move forward with Central Park next year along with some more capital improvements, hopefully if we're, for a lot of the monies next year.
Question? Mr. Palja?
Thank you, and again, compliments to everybody on the committee. Really great recommendations, again, we're hitting every part which I think is important. The other piece which I still really want to follow up is picnic tables at Central Park. I just can't tell you how much they're needed there. We have many, many youth groups that visit Central Park during the summer, from nurseries to schools, and we only, we have maybe 10 tables outside the pavilion, that's a lot. We have no handicap, no 88 picnic tables. I would really like to see if we can do them in-house, and maybe set aside some funding for the material, to maybe get, you know, six, 10, 12 tables out there, because they will be utilized, and again, I'm there every day with the summer, with the camp, and the buses just come in, and we have nowhere to sit these youngsters if they have lunch, other than the hills. It becomes very troublesome, especially when they try to come in with some wheelchairs and stuff too. We don't have any picnic tables that are ADA accessible and offer the kids, so.
In the pavilion, there's picnic, they don't, they can't eat in the pavilion, I understand not, the handicapped-
They can't use, they can't use the pavilion because we're, the score camp is there till 1 o'clock, and we're under New York State, we're licensed summer camp, so the pavilion has to be strictly for the camp utilization only till 1 o'clock. We do certainly, if it's raining outside or whatever, Sick'em is a free lunch site if it's raining, we then move the Sick'em lunch site inside, and we allow people to eat indoors, but again, we're, the score camp is under New York State license, and has to be strictly for the score time.
So you're talking about other youth come to get their lunch at Sick'em or something? They have no appointment?
No, they just come and do day trips. Nurseries will come and do day trips, they'll walk the kids around the park, they'll play in the swing sets, they'll go to the Rose Garden, and, you know, they're from all over, Niskiuna Colony, the YMCA comes out, Jeremy, I know I'm missing a few other groups, the buses just continually come in there. It's a great sight to see, it really is absolutely wonderful, they use the paddle boats and so on, but it's just, we just don't have tables for those folks to sit at. And I would really like to see if we can set aside some money, again, do them in-house if we could, and get another, like I said, dozen or so possibly in that park area.
Mr. President?
Other questions or concerns? Ms. Rich?
Yes. Is there any way possible, because when we were doing the cleanup in Hillhurst Park, the tennis courts there are kind of unusable, and, you know, some, they're really not deep enough. Anyhow, long story short, can maybe some of that money be put aside for fencing and stuff, to fence it off, or change the fencing to make maybe a dog park area in Hillhurst? That's something that people have asked about, and a lot of people do run their dogs in Hillhurst Park, and unfortunately, a lot of them, when they get to the park, they unleash them and let them go through the park, and that's been another ongoing problem that we have there. So, if, or even in the future, something to keep in mind, if that area there, because it's not used for much else, anyhow, Rich.
We'll certainly look into that, and see how far we can stretch this 25 hour.
But maybe the fence, because the fence that's there maybe could be moved around to close it off with a gate, so that's just a possibility, some of the straw out there.
When we get on the dog park, I would certainly say that you work with Lori Batchendorf from the 12309 neighborhood, so they just received a nice grant from the Schenectady Foundation and from New York State to do the dog park at Central Park, including water and toys, facilities for the animals, so rather than starting from scratch, Rich, yeah, certainly, you know, Lori Batchendorf is also-
She's on our mission.
Oh, very good, then if she was certainly know all about it, then yeah, I would certainly work with her closely on that. But that's a good idea, and one time they're talking about doing that in the parking, if I recall, remember, there was parking reflection issue, and just getting rid of the test corner and turning it into parking, but whatever it is, I'll be there.
Other questions, concerns? So really, the committee, the commission just came to do reports tonight, the council doesn't have to take any action on this because it's done through the commission, so. So let me just also say, we can't assure you that the concerns you brought up will be out in this year's funding, because they've kind of, they've been at it for a long time, but we'll at least consider it, and if it's possible, perhaps, but if not, definitely make sure that it's on next year's agenda, which is what they did with some of the things this year. There were concerns that were brought forward last year, could not be funded, and they were brought forward again this year, so it's something new that we're doing in the last couple of years. Again, the commission's doing outstanding job, and hopefully we'll get all the parts done.
So does this have to be council-approved at the next meeting? Doesn't? Okay, so I can start working with city staff to get purchase orders going? Okay, this is excellent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it, all of you. All right, next we'll have the Vale Park partnership, Ms. Brazo.
That actually, we put off one cycle, we're still organizing, but it will give you just a little insight, my side is interested in coming through the far side of their property and creating a nature trail down the side of the embankment into Vale Park, we have a very steep embankment, so it has a bunch of, you know, switchbacks to do that, you know, coming along the side of the pond, creating a teaching pavilion, some restrooms, and, you know, bringing school groups through the natural habitat of the park, which is, again, more activity in the park, right, in the heart of downtown, it's a good, positive thing. So I know that they are considering some CFA funding requests, and they're just trying to nail down, so the council's heart in that would be authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership with Vale Park, and then once they do have that information coordinated, they will be coming to sit to the council and explaining the project as a whole. It would include some smart lighting, some Wi-Fi available in the park, and also some lights would dim down and activate when there was activity in the park, which would also be really good, you know, safe for all of our parks, really. So stay tuned on that, but she's just fine tuning her information, and they'll come in the next segment.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, the Wood Lawn Preserve funding presentation, Janet Chen is here to do that. And this is just another example of a neighborhood group who's working hard on park in their neighborhood.
Okay, so, there's two items, I think, to think about. One is the potential survey, and the second is a mitigation project that could possibly happen. So, as brief history, a gentleman, Steck, secured two years ago approximately $100,000 for the Albany Pine Bush Commission to help the Wood Lawn Preserve kind of get up to speed and management activities, that sort of thing. But their hands were tied legally, and they weren't really able to do too much, they did get us some equipment, et cetera, but, so a gentleman, Steck, went back to work, and he secured $50,000 of that $100,000 for the city of Schenectady to be able to go ahead and do what needed to be done. So one of the things that was determined, was needed to be done, was a survey. A lot of things that have gone on in the Wood Lawn Preserve the past few years, there have been properties that have foreclosed upon, returned to the preserve, so basically, a survey to establish boundary lines, boundary markers. The money could also be used for fencing. The money could also be used for fencing, to keep out all-terrain vehicles and motorbikes. And I think that's been three major things. So we did have a meeting on May 3rd. Myself, Chris Hawer, was the executive director of the Pine Bush Commission. Steve Strickland was there, Chris Wallen, Paul LeFond, Mayor McCarthy, and Thad Ruppert from Phil Steck's office. We discussed all this. And, um, let's see. So the point person for the project was to be Steve Strickland and he was going to write a resolution that the city council would pass that we could go ahead with the survey. I'm not really sure if the resolution is necessary or not to do the survey, but if it is, Steve is no longer here. So we need a resolution, I guess?
I think the resolution from the council is to accept the money because of the restrictions where the Albany Pine Bush can't spend the money. And we're looking still to continue to work with them. But once the city would accept that money, then we would go out and get a price for the survey, see how much that would use up and then look for... We don't anticipate it's going to cost the full $50,000. And then the residual could be used for some of the other mitigation, some of the signage and fencing. Yes.
However, they don't front-load you the money, so we wouldn't actually get the money. We would have to spend the money and then get reimbursed. So Chris was in touch with Lori King from the DEC. And Lori said, "I will set up a new contract in the GG," that is, the City of Schenectady's $16,000, $17,000, $50,000 EPF budget line. And goes on. So that's kind of in the works. And then they wanted to know exactly what we're going to do with that. And Chris described briefly, forgive me, oh. The $50,000 will be used by the City of Schenectady to complete the property survey, produce boundary signage, post boundaries with signage, erect chain link fencing to restrict access for motorized vehicles. And he goes on to say, "The survey is the most critical piece to fully identify the protected lands so the property can be appropriately managed in the future for habitat preparation." And then in addition, at the end, Thad added that Phil is actually working on legislation that would allow the Albany Pine Bush Commission to include the Wood Lawn Preserve in Schenectady County, as you know presently, it's just under the Albany County. So we just need to figure out how to get this money, how to spend it, and then how to get reimbursed for it. Now, according to Chris Hawer, who would always be available to any of us for... It's a lot less painful to get the money reimbursed now than it used to be, that it's just a matter of weeks whereas it used to take quite a bit of time. So I guess what we need to do, I'm guessing, is put out a bid for surveys, find out how much we need.
Again, what I would ask the council do is accept the $50,000. And then we will then do the paperwork to go out before the bid and then survey related expenses. And it's a standard state reimbursement where we get to expend the money and then submit it to the state for reimbursement.
So that's the resolution that we need to actually, a resolution to accept that money?
Yes.
Is that something, yes, Mr. Regge?
No. Is there something we have to do with that by resolution?
Yes.
I'm willing to move that. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
There is a second project that doesn't really require any out-of-pocket money from the City of Schenectady at all. And this involves mitigation project. There is an auto dealership in the Capital District area who needs to expand to fulfill their corporate identity. And there's a small wetland that needs to be filled in. So Norbert Quenzer is an environmental consultant with Baggdon Environmental. He's looked at the Wood Lawn Reserve before for a past mitigation project that the DEC eventually said wasn't really necessary. But this time it is necessary because the auto dealership, there's no place on their own property to mitigate this little wetland. So what he's proposing to do, and I did include this in a packet to everyone, is, and this has already been approved by the Army Corps of Engineers, they're going to create a small wetland at the end of the pond to mitigate the wetland that's going to be filled in. But they will also take out all of the phragmities that are surrounding the ponds now. Phragmities is an invasive grass that just takes over. And Steve Young is a chief botist with the Nature Conservancy, Natural Heritage Program of the Earth State. He has warned us in the past, over the past year or two, that the phragmities is really increasing. And eventually, it could actually impact drainage properties of the pond, which is purposeful concern. So they will take out the phragmities, monitor it for a period of three to five years. When they create the wetland, they'll take some of that sand and they'll repair some of the badly flooded trails that the ATVs have managed to do, lead up to dune. And they will also provide some boundaries for us, whether it be fencing or, I'm not sure exactly what the boundaries would be, but they want to help preserve, you know, preserve from future ATV incursions. So that's two projects where we get more boundaries, which is great. And this has no cost to the city. So the only thing they've asked for is some reassurance that the wetland that's created will not in the future be developed or filled in or... So I did send them our court resolution, thinking that perhaps that would say, "No, we're not going to develop here anymore." And I gave them my opinion that it would not be developed, but I guess I'm not credible enough because they want something from the city saying, you know, there won't be no development there. And since we don't have a deed or anything that actually says that within it, I thought maybe just a statement from the mayor or from Mr. Palatico or from, you know, Ms. Mancini or somebody. Norbert Quenzer felt that would be added.
Designation for the law.
So all we need is some reassurance to the Army Corps of Engineers that there would be no further developments in there, other than the Pine Bush management. The wetland wants created, let's say.
So the mayor, is it, would it just be a letter? Or does the council, you feel like the council needs to put together a resolution for that?
I'm not sure. I think we probably should have the law department talk to the municipal specifically what they want.
We'll follow up with you and then...
Proceed accordingly.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. That's something we can bring back in a couple of weeks, shouldn't we?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So in a couple of weeks, we'll bring that back and should have the information for that.
It doesn't need council action. It's taken care of.
All right.
Resolution from the back.
Excellent. It doesn't need council action, then it'll just be done and taken care of. All right. Last item on the agenda, habitability of local hotels.
Actually, this is for a field's agenda. I just forwarded it along because it got missed.
Okay. This is something I think probably we're going to need. I'm not sure we're going to need actually to come and discuss this from the city or what's going to be the county. But something that I think that we really should be starting to have a conversation about. A lot of our local hotels aren't necessarily used as hotels in how we normally think of a hotel. A lot of them are being used to house people who are homeless for various reasons. Our Department of Social Services is using, you know, is putting people there until they can put them into an apartment. And I have concerns about what the condition of some of these hotels are that people are living in because of information that I've been told and I've actually seen at least one of those places firsthand. So I know that usually it's the Department of Health that looks at hotels to make sure they're up to being inhabited by human beings. I'm not sure if that's happening with these particular ones. And I think that as, you know, since they're within the bounds of the city, we really should be taking a look and looking at places that people are being put into to live. I did speak with the Commissioner of Social Services because I wanted him to know that I did have concerns and that I would be bringing it forward to the council. And his office has nothing, they can go in and just kind of take a look, but they have no enforcement powers. So, you know, I think we should take, definitely, I would like us to take a look at this to, if we need to talk with, have the county Department of Health come in or if it's something that we do for coenforcement within the City of Schenectady. But the condition of some of the hotels are pretty bad. And I don't want us to be in a similar condition that we've heard neighboring counties to be in, that we should be a little bit more proactive with this. Mr. Regge?
Is this something, maybe a rental certificate? We could tweak the rental certificate code? Will he require?
I don't know that a rental certificate would be effective in this situation.
No, for example.
Yeah, it's not...
Can't react. Generalities, you had it. If there's specifics, we'll send a billiard inspector out. Fire department does some level of inspections. And of course, some are handled by county agencies, Department of Health, depending on what the issue is, will respond accordingly.
So, all right, so there is no, like, standard every year that someone goes in and says, "This is okay"? Just, you know, like other hotels? There's no one that goes in or no agency that goes in every year to just review everything?
Don't believe so. Elevators are inspected annually and...
Any type of fire extinguisher, that kind of stuff is all.
Smoke detectors?
Fire safety is inspected, yeah.
Expected to be. Are there structural issues or not?
The other?
I don't know that...
Saty is a public, a place of public assembly.
Well...
I do agree with you.
Yeah.
I've been in a few myself, collecting applications from kids for summer jobs. And it's very sad. It's very, very sad. And I don't wish anybody being in those rooms, obviously. But the other conditions are, in many cases, I mean, deplorable, deplorable. Very bad.
Give us the specifics and we'll...
I can do it. I can do it.
Okay. Well, I think that we can definitely, Mr. Ruff, that we can definitely give specifics. But I also feel like we should have put something in place that there's annual inspections because people are living there for, it's supposed to only be 10 days. I know of a family that lived there for months. So they're living there for extended periods of time and it's entire families living in one or two rooms. So that, right there, is a cause for concern. Ms. Rosa?
I know for hotels, the Department of Health is the lead agency on inspecting whether there's, you know, bed bugs, whether, you know, electricity or probably the proper fire procedures are in place, you know, fire poles and all of that. I know all the calls under purview of the Department of Health. But when Ms. Porterfield and I were discussing this, we were like, "Are these hotels or motels or whatever still zoned as such? You know, are they still technically a hotel or motel? Or are they now a boarding house or something along those lines?" So I think those are some of the things we have to find out, to find out where the responsibility lies as far as that goes. Is the department, is it slipping through the cracks or not? I mean, it might be, there might be a system in place, but I think we just need to find out exactly who's responsible for it for a while.
Other questions, concerns? So I know that the mayor says that, you know, to have specifics. Mr. Kozier says that he can give specifics. But beyond the specifics, I think, again, we really need to have... Well, first of all, let's look at the last time these hotels were inspected for basic things. The fire detectors, the smoke detectors and all those things. The carbon dioxide. Let's see the last time that hap, well, first of all, who should have done it?
Right.
And then the last time it happened, and then move forward from there. Is a place that I'll ask the Department of Health if that's the place to go. And we'll move forward from there and see the last time that happened and then how we move forward. It's an issue that is of great concern because it's also public safety. People, there are people living in there. And so we should be addressing those things, so.
Again, can't deal with generalities. Life safety issues. We'll do it right now. You know, if it's routine follow-up, we'll go on a schedule and do follow-up in the next couple of days.
I will let your office know? And you will provide the information?
Yes, yes.
You understand life safety, but I say now, it'll be done tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll be back in two weeks.
Yeah, I said two weeks. So can I just add something, you know, staying on this health piece, if I may? We have Assistant Chief Seaver here, you know, the buses. I always see the unmarked buses that are on State Streets picking up on the corner of State. And is that, what is that corner there?
Martin.
Martin, they're all, I mean, they're completely, there's no markings, no nothing, just license plates. I'm sorry? No, no, the big buses, the big buses, the big, you know, the big gray, it's, yeah, those big tour, whatever they are. I mean, they're going to New York City is what they're doing. They're picking our folks up and heading down there. And I don't even know what the times are, but they'll drop back off and there's 15, 20 people getting off, 15, 20 people getting on. And there isn't a marking on the damn bus, other than a plate. And was wondering, what is the regulation on something like that? Every time I think about it, I was going to call and it's like, all right, I just, we forget about it and move on. But there's some concerns about those things, you know?
Yeah, I'm sure there's pickup sites and drop-offs that are easily added for safety and stuff. It's just a great home bus station, that's why. I'll have to look into it. I don't have an answer for immediately. I'm not aware, but maybe Chief Albo is because he feels the control ended.
I'll text you the addresses, yeah. There's a couple of them there. And they're there regularly on a daily basis. I just, you know, wonder what's going on. Is there any regulations that, are we, you know, making sure the buses are safe, first of all? And what's happening there? Is cash only or what's happening? You know, I'm very serious. I mean, it's crazy stuff.
We do a lot of truck inspections throughout the city on a weekly basis. And then we call them to do truck inspection as well, inject the brakes, inject the weight.
I'll get it to you.
But we can not follow up with the assistant chiefs so they know how.
They're actual bus stops?
Yeah.
They're actual bus stops?
But they're CDK.
No.
No, 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 no.
It's a private bus company.
Which has no markings on it.
Yeah. There's other private bus companies that do, like you said, make trips to New York.
I understand.
Yeah. Funny enough, somebody just mentioned this to me, but you do get a ticket to the bus, I mean, you do have to purchase a ticket to the bus.
They're the same?
And it's under certain, it's like the Go Bus or something like that. I don't know what the name of it is, but it would still be worth looking into to make sure it's just operating the way it should. Because we were at Vale Cemetery and the woman remarked and said, "Oh, that's where the bus stop is for that bus." So they, she had taken her niece and she's actually at the train station, but it was actually way by Vale Cemetery, which is up State Street, so.
Just interesting.
It sounded legit, but worth looking into, you know? Worth looking into for sure.
Maybe it's a magical mystery tour.
Right now, I can think of a lot of stuff.
Very good. Very, very, thank you.
Anything else coming for health and recreations?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Callings order, Public Service Utilities. We have one item on the agenda, the taxi cab discussion, Chapter 236.
Present. Yes. So we discussed two weeks ago, bringing our recommendations to the table. I did go and meet with Lieutenant Stickney and Sergeant Aragon. And they had great recommendations and provided me with a ton of information. And we had a robust discussion. And so I kind of organized it all for you in accordance to our city code. And I guess I'll just go through it. We can discuss item by item. And then if anybody else has anything to bring to the table for discussion, we can go through that too. Right now, in Section 236-6, when a damaged cab is seen, Sergeant Aragon will approach the taxi company and say that they're required to do bodywork, update their pain, have general good appearance to the cab. And he said, regardless of that, you know, some conditions remain that are still, you know, unacceptable. And we're forever working on getting our, you know, keeping our cats in good shape. One of the things he questioned was, would it be advantageous to require that vehicles are less than 10 years old? So I bring that as a discussion point. He also pulled the language you see below it from another municipality. I can tell you that it's important, but anyway. And I thought it really was more inclusive than the language that we have currently in 236-6. 236-6, if you've read that language. So, I bring that also to your consideration. Did you make copies of the code as it stands so that you can look at what's there? And I apologize, I need to restart while you're passing that out. Before we even get into this, I'm sure many of you...
What's in there?
Okay. So, I'm sure many of you are aware that the state just passed legislation through both the assembly and the senate that would address ongoing issues regarding customer service, pricing, overall quality. And the municipal governments would work in concert with the Capitol district transit authority, which is CDTA, to coordinate and standardize some of the ministerial processes surrounding the registration of taxi cabs and licensing of taxi cab drivers. And so, the CDA would also manage a very limited piece of the administrative services. The legislation seeks to give local governments and CDTA the ability to work cooperatively to streamline administrative processes with the goal of providing improved taxi cab service to anyone who's through the apple district.
I just handed that out to everybody's now. Very, yes, thank you.
So, CDTA will not be taking on the authority to make licensing decisions or which cabs to register and those decisions will remain solely ours, but they will be working cooperatively to take out administrative duties for a unified complaint process. They will not be making those decisions though. So, the legislation will create a one-stop shop for taxi companies and drivers to have a place to go for the medallions as opposed to having to go to each community to become licensed. Now, that being said, even though this legislation is passed, the time is down, so I'll just look at our city code, because it could be a year down the line, it could be six months down, or it could be tomorrow, but we're working within, you know, a moratorium and they're only taking out limited services. So, I think it's still to our advantage to make sure our code is where we want it to be and then it can dovetail in with what CDTA's efforts are as they move forward with this, the governor's time set. So, I meant to mention that at the beginning, I have this paper over here, so I went, lodged right into this other topic. So, does anybody have any questions about the CDTA legislation? Is everybody aware of it? Comes at a great time. I sat down a couple of months ago and talked to Assemblyman McDonald and also Carver Still from CDTA. They weren't ready to go public with it, which is why I haven't mentioned it before now. They were really setting their sights at January, that was their goal, and they said, you know, lofty goal would be to get it done, you know, by the end of session and they didn't expect that to happen and obviously their fellow legislators liked the idea just as much as everybody else has so far, so they made it happen. So, that's a wonderful thing. But again, I think there's a lot of details to still flesh out. So, back to our traffic recommendations. The first is, of course, just a flushed out version of what we already have in section 236-6. Gives more specifics to exactly what they would be looking at and inspecting and I think it's more inclusive than what we have there now, and good example of where we might go with it. Did anybody, anything to say about that to your section? Any other input that they had, or they thought about in that to your section?
Who's committed a serious?
Oh, sorry, I shouldn't be asking that question. I'm trying to be recording out.
That's what it was. Of course, appearance is subjective to everyone, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but I think if, if they do, if the police department sees a cab that they says needs some body work because it's not acceptable on appearance, it seems like there should be a timeframe and to be re-inspected or a medallion should be pulled. You know, give them, let's say, a one-month window to fix it, which should be more than enough to get it in shape and if not, and I think it's something that, that should be a reason to maybe pull the medallion so that, that doesn't run.
That's actually already part of our code. They, the cabs are to be inspected every single month. So, although Lieutenant, excuse me, Sergeant Harrigan doesn't necessarily inspect every single cab every month, he will bring that cab in once repairs are in order, he'll bring it right back in around and make sure that the repairs have been made.
I don't understand the regardless, some conditions are unacceptable.
They still find some conditions are unacceptable, he said, you know, as they're doing the inspections. You know, he's saying, what, what that came from was him saying, regardless of the fact that our code reads as it is, we still continue to find unacceptable conditions. But then they ask them to, you know, fix the conditions. So, it's an ongoing process and, you know, one of the things we also talked about with the CDTA thing is, right now, he's so mired in some of the, you know, daily operations of getting his work done that it's hard for them to do the proactive work, like checking on whether cab company is actually available 24 hours a day or getting to every single cab, you know, inspection-wise, every single month. So, I think it's a, I know that they sent out a letter in the file saying that they're going to really tighten up on inspections and regulations and since then, they have done that and they're getting a better rate of compliance. But again, it's one person, we have 150 drivers in the city.
So, we are inspecting every cab once a month or only ones that have been called, been spotted?
No, he's doing it on a rotating basis, but when he's specifically requesting a repair made, he's following up on that to make sure that...
Because I know people personally, they can make a brand-new car look like junk within a month. I've seen it.
Yeah.
Any other questions in regard to that section?
Okay, so, the next section was 236-11 and that brings the question of whether we should limit medallions or not, whether we should require a minimum number of cars in a fleet to off, you know, to, to accept them as a business in the city. Should we provide growth rates for our bigger companies and maybe limit our one-cab companies? We have 150 drivers in the city. Right now, that's a list of all of the companies we have currently and how many cars they have. One thing that I found that was interesting is we have several people who own more than one taxi company and what had, what was explained to me is so that they can keep below some of the minimum numbers that are required for different legislation and we can dig into that a little bit more. That kind of a superficial explanation, you know, not just because I'm not sure they even, we even know why this is happening, but, you know, if you notice, there's Midway has eight cars, the exact same owner as United that has two cars. We have Danny's, Gandy's in Midtown, all owned by the same person. And I think that's, you know, certainly something that we need to look at. I'm not sure why that's happening. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight companies that have one car. So, on the next page, you'll notice language about Troy, which I think is interesting in that they actually, in their, in their code, name the taxi company and how many cars that they will be allowed in, which is something we may want to consider if we say, okay, you know, currently Electric City S16 will allow for growth and, you know, allow the 22 cars and, you know, break it down and say, you know, we'll, we'll allow 10 single-car companies. Again, I'm just like throwing out ideas for discussion in accordance to what we talked about with traffic. Or do we legally go vague and say the numbers will be set by resolution by the council? So, that is easier to change it, just for consideration. Another, I think, important thing that came out of our conversation is that medical cabs currently are not taxi cabs within the city. They don't have meters and they aren't regulated at all. And one of the suggestions would be to have the medical cabs actually be licensed with us and require a medallion even though they wouldn't have a meter, would at least allow us to inspect the cabs and get, you know, at least a little bit of regulation because right now, the medical cabs are only contracted through Medicare. So, we have no regulatory oversight of those, those cars. And they're also, as rumor, as rumor states, picking up flat speed fares that aren't necessarily medically related. So...
So, you're saying we, we have a right to, to possibly issue a medallion? Is that what you're thinking?
They, that was one of the recommendations. I mean, law would have to look into it, but they, what I talked about with them was, you know, can you license it? They have, with the exception of not, really actually the only municipality that requires meters in our cabs. A lot of the other municipalities, well, all of the other municipalities do a flatrate thing, which I think the meter is good. It keeps our cab drivers honest and, you know, and it keeps the, you know, no surprises to our fares. So, the medical cabs, we couldn't really require them to have a meter, but at least if we required them to have a medallion, we could inspect them and regulate them a little bit.
For the drivers too?
Yeah, and also write to drivers and make sure that the dri, and there's stuff about the drivers as we go forward.
Ms. Ross.
So, are you saying that they told you that no one regulates these medical cabs?
They are, they are contacted through Medicare. What Medicare does with them, I do not know, but we don't as a city have oversight on the cab.
But, but there, there is a reg, they are regulated, that, and, and someone just talked about the drivers. And I know for a fact that they, if their driver has a certain illness, they can't drive for a certain amount of time. So, there is a, there is an agency that does oversee that. It's not the city, but there is an agency, I don't know the agencies, but there is definitely an agency. You can't just like slap your name on the side of it, you know, and then I could start picking up passengers.
No, no, no. They're contracted service through Medicare. I'm sure Medicare, Medicare.
Right. But there's also something that oversees like what they can and can't do.
Right.
Because they're picking up people who are upset.
Right. We just don't have any.
Right. We don't have the oversight, but they are, there is definitely a regulatory agency. We may need to go above and beyond that or in addition to that, but there is a regulatory agency that oversees that.
Was it brought up that with the naming of the taxi cabs and how many they're allowed to have, you know, if a new company was to arise, is that included into new law? Would that have to be revisited to include their name into the whole, the whole goal after that?
Right. This, again, this is just like an example of where we might go with it. It may look something like we name the top three companies and then we give X number of medallions for cab, for taxi companies that have less than three cars. I mean, it might be something general like that. We might not always name every single, and my other thing is, or are we vague and just say that it's designated by the council so that we can change out the names when we wish to or whatever? My thought was if we named like the top three companies and allow them X number of growth and then we look at a pool of medallions that are just open and when it's full, it's full, you know, and we don't take any more single-car companies or, like I said, we might consider having a minimum requirement. It's like, and, you know, you don't, we don't allow for single-car cab companies. Not, I'm not supporting anything, I'm just bringing it for discussion to the council on where we might go with it. Another recommendation was right now, if one of our cab drivers has their license suspended or whatever, they, we don't, like, we don't really know until, unless they get pulled over. There's no reporting purpose if it happens outside of the city or whatever. There's a free program called the LENS program that's used in other municipalities that would automatically notify us of that, notify the police department. So, that seemed like a no-brainer to me. I mean, it's free and it helps us track people, it makes sense. So, there's just some, would be some provision within the code to say that a requirement was that the drivers sign up for this lens, you know, fill out this lens application and sign. So, there's some, some language that's included in that. And then the other thing is, we only, right now, fingerprint our drivers initially. The fingerprinting of the drivers allows for a background check on whether they've been arrested for anything outside of the city that we wouldn't necessarily be aware of or, you know, that sort of thing. So, that's just a one-shot deal and what they're requesting is we change that to every three years. So, that, again, that fingerprinting would kick off a background check. I think, I read in, in our paperwork, it's like an $87 fee that would have to be paid by, by the taxi company, but it would allow us to know if something untoward has happened between the original time of the fingerprinting, which I thought was certainly a good regulatory measure, you know, suggestive language for that. And then the last thing that we talked about was, I already mentioned we're dealing with municipalities' meters, but they do feel that a rate change would be beneficial to the taxi companies and allowing them better upkeep. It hasn't been changed, as we well know, 16 meters. The rates are in the packet, the code that I gave you, or that Chad gave you. And also, right now, our medallions cost $250 and they charge us $650. So, they said, you know, it may be prudent to also increase our medallion fee at this time. My personal recommendation out of walking away from the conversation was, you know, they were talking about complaints and there's a complaint form that they use and all that and like, but how, I don't, I don't think I would figure out to call police to complain about a taxi cab. I would call a taxi cab company, you know? If you go to eat in a restaurant and you don't like the food, you wouldn't, you know, well, you might go, I don't know, maybe at a service stand, but, you know, you'd call the restaurant and complain. So, I, I thought, and this is something we should probably hold on until we see where the CDTA thing goes, we can at least get it up on our website. But, you know, to require a sticker to be in each cab that says, you know, "Are you enjoying your ride? If you have any concerns, call X," you know, call this number. So, that might be a consideration for us going down the line because I just think the complaint process might be confusing to people and they might not know how to complain if they have that experience, other than put it on Facebook.
Any questions?
There's one, it's, it's not in here, there's, it's actually in our legislation, 23622, certificate of physical examination. Do you know if that's something that's currently being done?
I do, 22 physical, I'm sure it is. I mean, it's part of what they have to get handed to get their license, right?
I'm sure, what did you say? There's a piece of the, our legislation, it's 23622, certificate of physical examination. So, is everyone who's going to be a driver of a cab, do they have to go to their physician and turn something in that's within a month?
I think that might be part of their cab license as far as the state of New York is concerned. I'm not sure if we do it. Cities can't do it by ordinance. Background checks, I mean, all those things that we can do on a daily basis with the, with the cab drivers and all the inspection we do as far as the health.
It's 23622 in there. No, it's not that particular one.
I'll ask, I'll ask.
Yeah, I'll have to find out because it's something that we couldn't receive anyway because of the book.
You could not receive because of the book?
We could receive a, maybe a good certificate saying that you're, you have a health problem and you might find out what health problem, that's what we need to have as far as this is concerned.
Because this is very specific, I mean, it names a very specific health issue.
Probably right near as you go before.
Probably, probably.
Well, maybe that's why it's excluded also to be, to be increased in that.
And, and I just want to make sure though, when it's discussed, that it's every single driver and not just the owner of the cab company? Everyone that they have that drives through them?
Yes, I will ask. I would be shocked if that doesn't happen, but...
Any other questions?
Should we continue moving on this, regulations and...
Yeah, I feel like we need to not stall on this too much. You know, there are some discussion points here that I'd kind of like to get a general consensus on where we want to, you know, things we want to move on, things we don't want to move on, you know, whatever the case may be because we're working in a 30-day moratorium, which we can expand if we need to, but I don't want to linger over this for too long. So, I, I mean, I, is there anything? I guess I'll throw... I guess I'll throw it out to say, over the next two weeks, get your recommendations to me, where we might go with it. I don't know that we can hash this all out and discuss it now, but we have to move forward on it all, so.
Yeah, I really think, and Ms. Proust, I really, to take a look at this legislation that was just passed, in the article, and I don't know who wrote it, it was Paul or Haley who wrote it, but the piece that I picked up is that they wanted to use Schenectady as one of the pilots, this whole capital region, and they mentioned Schenectady specifically in there as well to be included. And it also talked about with the rates, trying to uniform all the rates within the area too, because Albany had a different rate, Schenectady had a different rate, and they were really trying to bring all that on the same page. But if you can contact whoever that would be, you know, CDTA or whoever, to see how far along they are or how soon that process will begin, or will it be ready by the end of 2016? If we have to wait that long, you know, I think this is very important for the casino coming up. I think that's the key right now. We've talked about that whole process with folks coming in, so go on, Gary. Well, he got it.
I got it.
The review with CDTA and Assemblyman McDonald's been going on for over a year, and they have consistently used Schenectady as a reference point, where our legislation is more encompassing, our enforcement is more aggressive, and we're really kind of the better example of municipalities within the capital region. So this legislation going forward, which I'm glad that it's passed, would look at some point in time, and again, just because it's passed the legislature, it'll be a period of time now before it goes to the governor, when the governor signs it, when it actually has an effective date, and then for CDTA to be able to put in place the staffing and mechanism to manage it. But I would look to have Schenectady formally join that along with, you know, Troy and Albany being the three lead cities and then Colony where the airport is to... There's value collectively in this from having standardized rates. You land at the Albany Airport now, you're going to GE, you're going up to Global Foundries. Visitors complain because they will take the same route or path, different trips, and we charge different rates. They just want to know what the rates are and the quality of the cabs sometimes varies greatly. The Albany Airport has better standards for controlling people who are picked up at the airport, but when you're in a locality trying to get a ride to the airport or to the train station, your options are different, and it really doesn't necessarily reflect well on respective communities or the capital region as a whole, where there's some really great cab companies that really do a good job, good vehicles, good drivers, and then there's others that are, the quality varies widely, and they're looking to standardize that, bring up the whole image of the capital region so that it's fair for the companies and the service is consistent for those individuals looking to use it within the region.
I agree with all that, but it clearly also states that they would, they will not be making licensing decisions and which cabs to register. That still falls within the city purview, and we have a casino coming in and we have a tremendous influx of medallions being applied for. So I think we need to take action now on, you know, license requirements like the LENS program and like the fingerprinting, and we need to really seriously look at if we're going to limit medallions and if we're going to entertain one-cab companies or not-one-cab companies or have a minimum or a threshold that's met before we say, no, we're not accepting any more applications right now until another cab company, you know, decides they don't want to be a cab company anymore or whatever it may be. Because those things aren't going to fall under the CDTA umbrella. I think, you know, the rates are great, I agree, and the quality is great, and one of the components they don't talk about in here, what we talked about, is that they would fall under CDTA's customer service program, which I think is wonderful, so they would be giving them customer service training. But regardless, as a municipality, we still have some things that we need to address under the course of this moratorium. Or just I, we're not going to do anything, we're just going to let it be a free-for-all, but that's not something that's going to be regulated by CDTA. So, you know, I would like everyone to look at this and decide how they want to discuss this going forward, but I don't want to linger over this. We only have 30 more days and we can extend it, and we're going to have to have a public hearing within this period, so I will ask for it to be put on the agenda in two weeks and for us to, you know, if we don't want to look at rates now, that's fine with me. If we do want to look at rates and then standardize when CDTA is ready to stand there, that's fine with me.
The police department have a recommendation in terms of numbers of medallions.
They did, no, I could go back.
I thought informally, they, you know, they, again, it's not necessarily their decision, but they deal with it every day to come up with a number that would...
Don't some communities go by population?
Yeah, that's right.
Somebody per thousand?
Right.
My only thing was, in limiting the medallions, I really did like the language that Troy had, where they took the big, two, three big companies and they allowed for some growth for those companies but capped it off, and then I thought we could have a generalized small company threshold, so make it different. So we're like actually naming the top three companies and saying, we'll allow this many medallions for you beyond where they are now, and then take a pool of medallions to say, you know, any company with six or less cabs, this is the number that we have, so, I mean, I don't know, you know, again, I don't know exactly what that looks like. And then I think we really need to have some discussion about how we feel about single-car cab companies. I mean, it's written into our code that you have to have, it doesn't say an office, but it says a solid place to do business, and you have to be giving service 24 hours a day. And is that possible if you have one taxi? Maybe, maybe it is. You know, maybe you have three drivers and one taxi, I'm not sure, but I think we need to look at those things and decide how many single-car cab companies we're going to have out in the city of Schenectady.
And I see that from a different angle, because I have concerns that we take the bigger companies and say, you know, here, you know, you get to grow and grow and grow, small guy, you only get to grow so much. So I see that from a different perspective, and it's possible. I mean, maybe they have one cab now, but maybe they'll grow into two, so I want to be careful that we're not limiting those small businesses who may have an opportunity to grow into bigger businesses and that we're just, at one time, I think there was only two cab companies in the entire city of Schenectady. That's certainly changed. And I know those cab companies, at least one of them that's still around, has some concerns because they're all these smaller companies. I, I'm not really, actually, I'm opposed to somebody who takes their personal car and just puts a, one of those stickers on it and then drives around and, you know, picks up people and then takes it off, and then it's their personal car again.
They have to have a lit thing at the top to actually...
All the kind you go like this on top on the hood.
To be licensed, to have a medallion. If you look at the, if you look at the pictures of all of the taxis in the city, they all have that little light on top of you. It's part of our code.
So, but, you know, I, so I want to make sure that we give consideration to smaller companies who have an opportunity to grow and not just say to the bigger companies, you already have 22, we'll leave room for you to get up to 30, and then these small guys, you know, there's just, it limits your room for growth. So those are point, discussion points that I, you know, I'll follow the, you know, my thoughts on that, but I think we definitely want to make sure that we're giving small businesses an opportunity to grow a business, especially since it seems like, everyone seems to think it's going to be extremely lucrative pretty soon.
Any other questions? Any other questions? So revisit this in, please. Any other business to come before public service and utility? Follow those in favor?
Aye.
Order.
Good job. Request order claims.